Okay, I'd like to call and order the work session in San Trusco. Can you start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. Tuesday night, December 28th. For what you're saying, one nation, one people, and freedom.
Welcome to the work session for the trustees on Monday, August 2nd. So first item on the agenda is electric, that Eastport dock.
Would you like me to call and roll?
Oh, that's true, right, yes.
We've got President Schultz.
President.
Secretary of Treasury Harwood's here. Ed J. Warner Jr.
President.
William Pell the 4th.
President.
Ann Welker is absent today. President, we have a quorum.
Okay, great. All right, first item, electric.
Electric, I just wanted to have a brief conversation. I've been working with the Suffolk County Electrical Contractor on getting 200 amp service down to that Eastport dock for the purposes of operating compressor for a bubbler system for the pilings.
Put that down back.
I don't believe the pier is going anywhere. That pier is built to sustain, you know, a substantial amount. But I do think that we're gonna need electric there. And I just want to make sure that the board is, you know, on board with that. It's probably gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000 to get that done. We do have, you know, funds available. I guess...
Is it similar to what we did in Fort Pon at Little Neck to put the electric in and in future put receptacles to plug in the bubblers and also the potential lighting, you know, on the docks?
It's very similar to exactly what we did. I had a meeting down there with the county electrical contractor. I've had various discussions with the contractor that build and install the pilings. I had meetings down there with marine maintenance. You know, I think it's something that we really need to protect the investment. Time is money. If those pilings come out, they're bigger, you know, green hard pilings. It's not, you know, those little ones that our maintenance guys were handling. I just think it's a good idea, as many mariners do, protect the investment. And installing the bubble system in there. And that way, you know, you're keeping that marina intact. And also, like you're saying, we're gonna need it for other things as well. So I just wanted to see if anybody had any other ideas. I was working through the comptroller's office and getting things going utilizing the county contract. There's also a bit of paperwork that's gotta be done for, you know, PSEG Long Island. I've had some conversations with them as well. So if anybody has any input or questions or concerns, they can get with me right away.
I'm fine with this, Scott.
Yeah, good job.
I think it's a good...
Get a grant for solar lights down there?
Yeah, we could talk about that. I was primarily worried about right now.
The poles and the...
Yeah, kind of preserving the investment. We've spent 122,000 dollars to rebuild the pier.
And it's nice.
It does. I mean, there's a lot of people who are using it. And we're somewhere around 39,000 for the pilings. And the pilings are more standard to what, you know, traditional boat basins utilize as opposed to the ones that we have in the past, which really frees up the marine maintenance crew. It makes for a much better and safer facility. But I think we need to protect the investment.
It's the same scenario as Fort Pon, so where you get a very heavy layer of ice up to, you know, maybe a foot thick, and it will pull up even the green hard pilings. So I think it's a good investment for our investment.
Okay, so I'm just gonna keep moving forward with that, and I'll just keep everybody posted.
Well, pay for itself, because you've added some slips.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So it'll be fine. I just wanted to keep everybody apprised, and if anybody had any suggestions or ideas, they can get them to me, and we'll work together, and it'll all work out.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, it's a good upgrade on our, basically, on our, you know, all of our, you know, boat basins. I mean, when I started on the board 16 years ago, I believe we were charging $10 a foot. Now we're up to $75 a foot. But we've upgraded each one of the marinas that we can, and, you know, adding electric is another good dimension to it.
We're still a bargain relative to the town and relative to the market.
Correct.
And I've gone down there many times in the evening, and you see that place full of people crabbing and fishing and just basically enjoying the facility. So I think it's something that needs to be taken care of, so.
Agreed.
Not a huge expenditure, but, so if anybody has any input or ideas, then just get ahold of me.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to put Schinicka?
Yeah, Schinicka, yeah, we'll put, can we move it to the end?
Yeah, we'll move it to the end.
All right.
All right, let's go into the fish trap applications.
I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty, so I can't pull it up on the screen.
All right, so we'll move it, we can move it down to the end also. Take care of the permits first.
Sure.
All right, let's go into general permits. I have the first one with Tommy Rosenfeld, 44A, Baskin Neck Lane. The applicants have requested to put this on hold till the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? So Ed's next with Stephen Ting.
Stephen Ting. We had worked on this application a couple of years ago. It's basically removing a bulkhead and, you know, doing a natural shoreline in its place, very much different than most of our applications. James, you want to speak for that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Basically, the applicant's proposed to remove approximately 70 linear feet of existing bulkhead and reshore the natural shoreline. Minor regrading is proposed in order to provide a natural sloping shoreline. The following plantings will be installed as 1-inch plugs, minimum 12-foot on center when species are available, saltwater cord grass, saltwater meadow cord, rose mallow, American beech grass, and seaside goldenrod, basically recreating a natural shoreline. I think it's a good, basically, project. It's nice that the property owner has come before us and asked to do this, because as we know, removing bulkheads in certain situations can cause very devastating effects around the, on the neighboring properties. So I think it's a good project, so. Does anybody else have any questions about it?
That looks good. Do you want to move that forward?
I'd like to move it forward, yes. The next one is JA Land Use Consultants. Jeff Useley, is Jeff here today? No, I guess not. It's, the application is to propose a dock and a boat lift at... Doesn't have the address here.
35 Cormant Drive.
Yeah, but it doesn't have it on here. 35 Cormant Drive. Oh, there it is, on top, yeah. There are two boat lifts, one on the adjoining property and another on another adjoining property, one east and one west of it. The original owner of the vacant property owned both pieces. It looks to me now like the boat lift that is, was there originally is well over the extended property line. So I think there's gonna be a bunch of issues to resolve that original permit and to look to this one. So, James, any suggestions on how to, you know, move this forward as far as? And another thing is that I looked at the Blue Book. There's a regulation that precludes boat lifts to be placed in this area. So this is something that was pre-existing many years, you know, before I was on the board. So I think there's a, there's a lot of issues here to resolve before we move it forward. So I'd like to hold this off and, you know, make some phone calls and get a direction that we can go in to resolve some of them, okay?
Those are all within that pier line, is that right?
Yes, it's, there's 135-foot pier line, and each one of the, you know, projects that have been done here, the two that we're looking at on the...
This is the one you're talking about?
This is, yeah. It's originally, Dr. Murdo owned both of these properties here. The property to the east has been sold, so now there's a new projected property line, and the original...
They split it for the subdivision, probably?
Yeah, they split it for the subdivision. And this original lift that is on the Dr. Murdo's property is well over the extended property line. So moving forward, that's gonna be an issue. So I'd like to hold it and do some research on it.
Yep.
Okay?
Scott's next.
First one I have is Richard W. Most, 57, Ramona in Hampton Bays. This is a situation where they did a dredging project there, and they subsequently damaged his floating docks.
He's here, too.
He's here, Mr. Most? So they damaged his docks, so he rebuilt the docks, and he's looking to, you know, do it properly on the paperwork side in getting a permit. He does have a pre-existing project here. You can put that up if you can, James. He has, he doesn't, it's not your standard situation, but he does have a pre-existing permit that gave him permission to have what he has, and...
What do you, is that it?
This is...
Sold.
Eighty-one.
Yeah, eighty-one. So they've done this work already?
Prior to the new...
Right. So, you know, there was no issues with this all along, the whole way. No complaints, no problems, no issues. It's just a matter of being in compliance with, you know, our regulations. You know, he does have this prior approval. So I, you know, no one's complaining about it. I don't see it being a problem. So I just, it needs permission from the board moving forward. But he does have the proper paperwork.
Did he already did the work, Scott?
Yeah, because I believe it was damaged during the dredging project. They had this place done, right? You can't really speak from there, but you can speak from there if you want to tell...
Come to the podium and address the board, please.
You gotta state your name for the record when you get there, sir.
Richard Most?
When you get there.
When you get there, yeah.
Richard and Carol Most, 57 Ramona Drive. So, yes, we bought our beautiful home to be in December, and we knew it was going to be a long haul before we got our proper permits for renovating the home. And the only saving grace, really, was the fact that we had this floating dock, which I planned to bring our boat, our jet ski, and my rowing shell, so at least we could have some fun during the summer while we waited for our permits to be processed by the Board of Health. I was approached by one of the gentlemen in the community about April about a dredging project, and they asked if I wouldn't mind if they put the dredging material onto my backyard, because it would save them a ton of money in terms of taking their barge and hauling it out to Tiana Bay and bringing it wherever they had to bring it. Being a good neighbor and wanting to establish good relations, I said yes with the caveat that there would be no damage to my property and they'd restore me to where I was. So, no good deed goes unpunished. The next thing I heard was my docks had been pulled out of the water, were damaged, and were thrown away. But they could get me new docks and put them in the water, which they did the following week, all of this remotely because I was working. And Mr. Wilson Garcia, who was the dredging project manager, built the docks, was putting them in the water when he was approached by the bay constable, who said, "Take them out of the water, because you need a permit." So they came out of the water, and that brings us, basically, here, trying to hopefully salvage a bit of my summer with a bit of recreation and getting my docks back in the I have pictures, if you like. Show and tell.
The current dock, or the docks, the new docks that replaced the old ones, are they compliant with our material as far as non...
Tropical hardwood, yes.
Okay, so everything...
No seed, no...
So, so basically, the original docks had not lived out their longevity yet, basically, they were still functional and you could have used them.
In my estimation, I've been living on the water pretty much all my life. They were perfectly good docks.
And he does have prior approval.
This is a really unique situation.
The original docks were perfectly good and usable, and I was very disappointed to find that they had thrown them away.
He did have proper permission.
Yeah.
The docks are not in the water currently, though?
Currently, they're not. The bay constable insisted that Mr. Garcia remove them from the water.
He's trying to do the right thing, and he does have the...
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I mean, this is a really unique situation. First one I've dealt with, and, you know, it's...
Which brings up our discussion last week about exploration.
Yeah, I mean...
We're gonna talk about that.
Normally, the docks would be replaced when their longevity, the usage is done, but they never met that criteria, so...
No, they did not.
Well, they probably made you take them out because the new regulations state that it's only a 6-by-20 dock is allowed per each property, where you have two, which are pre-existing.
Right, right. I don't have a problem with it advancing. He does have the proper paperwork, and he's trying to do the right thing, and it is an unfortunate circumstance.
Yep.
Aside from that, it was permitted structure.
Sure, and would we be setting a precedent by doing this? Or is this something that, you know, I mean, the docks, the original docks, the permitted original docks had not, you know, gone their whole life yet, so...
He does have permits for it.
And they were damaged prior to their...
There's a question whether, you know, a floating dock, as seen, is taken in and out of the water, needs a permit to be reconstructed if it's the same plot, so...
We did the same thing years ago when we were... Overwent lines, Leo's electrical?
Yes, okay.
I think it's fine.
I'm fine with it. I mean, I am. I just want to make sure that, you know...
Okay.
Similar issues for objectives later today.
Okay.
But this is okay to advance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with it advancing.
He has prior permit.
Yeah, okay.
Since the docks aren't in the water currently, it wouldn't be an asbill, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. It would be on the next regularly scheduled meeting for approval.
Right, so we could advance this.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it would be on the next?
Yeah, it has to go to resolution.
Work session, and then it would, once we vet it through the work session, it moves to the next level where it's at the 1 o'clock meeting next, not this meeting, the 16th, for approval, or, you know, denial.
And then hopefully it will be approved, and I can put my docks in the water?
Yep.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
I may get one burrow in this summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Do you want us to come back?
No, you don't have to.
You don't have to. You can if you want. It's your choice, but it's not a requirement, but you can come back if you want.
You suggest we come back?
It's up to you.
No, it's just a resolution.
Three vessels, three vessels are, two vessels are what we allow at docks, so just to let you know.
Yeah. If there's an issue, James will contact you prior to the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Next one, we have John A. Pagnucci, 9 Washington Drive, N. Consultants. Anybody here from N. Consultants to talk about this project? All right, so maintenance dredge, irregularly shaped, approximately 1,280 square feet of area adjacent to the existing bulkhead beneath the existing floating dock to a maximum depth of 3 feet MLW. Truck approximately 175 cubic yards, sand spoiled off-site to an approved upland location as depicted on the project plan prepared by N. Consultants. It's kind of a standard type of operation here.
Pretty much right here, are they gonna be doing the dredging?
Yeah, yeah, you see? You had it, plans right there.
I mean, normally, they've done the dredging on the other side, but it looks like the material is filled in on the west side.
I don't see any reason to deny this.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm okay with it. We have approved it last time. When we did the rock repayment, they did some dredging in here.
Right.
About five or six years ago.
It's a necessary activity, so.
All right.
We should advance.
Yep, sounds good.
Then we have the Wayne Seawalser Revocable Trust. It's a modification. They want to do a 4-by-16 ADA compliant ramp at the landward terminus in lieu of 4-by-4 stairs. So they want to do a ramp instead of stairs at the landward end of this project. So I don't, I don't see a big issue with that either.
Yeah. If you want, I can pull it up.
We'll let him catch up. He's moving a little fast for him.
Well, if you look at the picture here, it's a considerable, it's almost like, almost like a three-foot elevation change. And they want to make so that...
Is that gonna be too steep?
Well, he's gonna spread it out over 16 feet versus 4 feet, so it's gonna be...
I guess they want to get a wheelchair up there, or here we go.
It's at the landward end, so I don't, I don't see an issue with that for us, having an effect on, on the waterway in any way, shape, or form. So I don't see a problem with that.
You want the photographs of the plan?
Yeah, you can put them up.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
Okay, are they gonna use light penetrating material?
It's all over the land.
Gina's here, if you have any questions for her.
Well, I'm the same, because if you put regular wood on it, it could get slippery with the...
Yeah, I think Ed's right, that way all some stuff will grow underneath it, all the soil.
Yeah, I mean, if you use a light penetrating like the classic or fiberglass grating, it'll be much, you know, easier to walk on if it gets damp or...
You want to address that?
It has a textured surface on it, too.
Yeah, so they can grip.
Better, you know, if you're walking up it.
Good morning. Gina Rigdon, DKR Shore is here to represent Holter. That's, that's fine. The open grade decking is fine. It'll match the dock, the dock anyway.
Okay.
It's fine.
So that can advance.
Okay.
Want me to stay up here?
Do you have another one?
Yeah.
Billy has one.
I have one.
Do you mind jumping out?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, might as well.
Yeah.
15 Norton Place, Southampton. Owner's Andrew. Application proposed to remove existing 4-by-20 timber dock, step and kayak rack to install a new elevated minimum 4 feet over grade 4-by-69 fixed dock with a low profile handrail with a 4-by-7 step at the terminus, all materials be untreated. Why is, they're going out so long? That's my question.
Just to get to a little bit more adequate water depth to launch a kayak.
I was there yesterday, and a guy came in on the, on the board.
And what?
A guy came up on the stand-up board, right to the, right to the guy's dock.
All the way out.
No.
Well...
When I, when I saw that, you don't need to go out another 40 feet.
0.9, 0.2, 0.3.
Well, they're, they're at, the dock right now is above, it's at high water. It's right in the cord grass. Originally, they had wanted to extend the dock to be able to get it out into some water for jet skis or whatever, 18 inches is required. And I said, absolutely not. What's there is not compliant. It's too low. It's in cord grass. There's racks that are above the cord grass. We have to remove the whole thing. It should be through flow. It should be higher. It's not compliant as it is, so...
Yeah, I'm not too keen on going out that far.
She's stuck with this no more appreciable depth of water.
Blue Book says 25 feet.
What's that?
Blue Book says 25 feet.
Yeah, if you can't make appreciable water depth.
Right.
So that would be 25.
Okay, so, so I have, it goes from 1.3 to 1.5. I mean, if I backed it up, I don't have a scale with me, but maybe 6 feet and stopped at 1.5. Because there is appreciable depth up to 1.5.
1.5 would give you 18 inches of water, right?
Correct.
And that would be good for jet ski lift and hoist?
Correct. Well, I don't need that, but yes, it'll get me to water.
As far as potential for the dock?
Yes. There's a little deep spot right there, and that's kind of where we're supposed, where we'd like to get to. It's consistent with the neighborhood. It's short enough, it doesn't interfere with anyone else. It's within required hypothetical property line setbacks. So if I shortened it roughly 6 feet, just eyeballing it?
It'd be better, because 89 feet's like, that's like double, more than double what's there now.
Okay. I have to go back into the drawing?
Yeah, go back, then do the draw and survey.
It looks like, this is my scale.
Davis Creek, I'm not sure if we have one.
1 inch plus 3. It looks about 6, 6 or 7 feet.
It's probably 100 feet if it's not listed, right?
Right, but if there's no, you know, appreciable...
Depth of water. Yeah.
It gets, it gets deeper, then it gets shallow.
I think that's, that's reasonable. Let me redo the drawing and resend it to James with a new cover.
Yeah, make the most sense.
Yeah.
And I still have DEC pending, too. Corps of Engineers, Department of State, so I have to have, see what they weigh in as well. And they could most likely maybe make their own changes.
Yeah, because right now it's too far.
Right. North Sea Harbor, there is a pier line. I believe Fred set a pier line of 50 feet in there.
Yeah, I'd like to see what the technical staff says, and I don't have a report back.
Okay.
This is North Sea Harbor or Davis Creek?
Davis Creek.
Davis Creek, yeah. Because North Sea Harbor does have a pier line. I remember Fred setting a pier line in there.
Mm-hmm, right, right.
I think it's...
Yeah, we went out there several times.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is.
North Sea Harbor is 60 feet.
60 feet, yeah.
It's 100 feet throughout the town, unless otherwise set.
This is a different body of water.
It's Davis Creek, which is off North Sea Harbor.
Right, so you'd have to follow the Blue Book on that.
Yep.
So are you gonna, so, what?
It'll be 25 feet.
25 foot? Unless you have, set, unless you set a pier line to the contrary. So in order to, you know, we had the same situation out in, say, Harbor. Right, where you want to, what?
Where your hands going now.
Yeah.
Instantly.
Right, right. So you have to do the same thing here. Otherwise, you're changing things.
So you got that?
25 feet from lower.
High water. If you don't reach appreciable, any appreciable difference in depth within the first 50 feet.
Looking at it, you might, it looks kind of close to the...
Yeah, I have to go back in the drawing and see.
Because the 69 feet on the, on your plan shows to the stone...
Yeah, that goes all the way to that retaining wall, right? That's the full length, so...
Right.
Let me go back in the drawing and see what I can do.
Put the calculations on where you are from high water.
Sure.
That might be, that might put you right in there.
It might be in the same spot.
Right.
Yeah.
It could be, but then it would be 1.5 or whatever shorter, so, like I said, let me, let me get DEC review if I could hold it over, and then consider shortening it and let the client know. Okay?
All right.
Thank you, Billy.
Thanks for joining.
Okay.
I'll go back to mine.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the last one that I have, it says Southampton Town, but it's not Southampton Town. It's, it's an error. It's Schinicka Shores is who the applicant is. It's to remove and replacing in kind their 50-foot-long groin walls with non-treated lumber with vinyl sheeting, engraved capping. Each one of these canals has these groin walls, and they just, they're rotten and they need to be done.
Right, they need fixing, they need replacement.
So we've done, we've let them do all of them, and I think we're gonna, we should let them do this one as well.
Yep, starting with that.
So it's not a, not a big deal.
Familiar with the area.
It cuts down on the, I mean, their need for dredging, and it, you know, allows it to, you know, stay open much longer. Without it, it would fill in pretty quickly.
Yes.
Exactly, and they're all beat up, so they need to, they need to redo them, so. There you go, he's gonna show you.
Do you want me to bring it up?
You can bring them up, so people can see.
I think that, that original one's pretty old. Must've been prepared in the 60s.
Yeah, but I mean, each one of the road ends gives public access to the beaches, you know, it's not like these groynes, you know, taking away public access.
The lower left's got the picture.
That was done in Creosote.
Yeah. The lower left's got the picture. So they gotta redo these things from time to time, so it's, it's a standard.
860s.
Yeah, between 55 and 60. And that's when they...
That can advance?
SNS instruction.
So that concludes my four for today.
Okay, Bill's next.
The next one I have is, the address is 374 West Neck Road. Owner's name is Glover LLC, and it's First Coastal Corp. Andrew wants to come up. Just to construct a new 4-by-84 catwalk with a 3-by-12 ramp and a 6-by-20 float with 8-inch diameter piles.
Do you have an overall where that is?
It's...
The area?
Yeah. It's just a little bit south of the dock.
Okay.
The owner of the property...
Join Bullhead Yacht Club, okay.
Reached out to the neighbor, Luke, and they had a quiet discussion. They moved the dock around, so he was happy. Andrew, you want to put any info?
Thanks, Andrew Baird, First Coastal Corp. We've, this is 100 feet overall length with good water depth for the float. Was located the dock in the center of the property to give the best possible clearance for both neighbors. You notice the commercial ramp and pier to the, the trustees ramping here to the north, and the Bullhead Yacht Club is two properties to the south. Posing open grade decking, no treated wood, all the good stuff. No railings on the dock are proposed.
Only thing I would add is probably a ladder.
That's easy.
Yeah, add a ladder, and it has to be stored, the float has to be stored upland.
Sure, of course.
I'm pretty, I'm fine with it.
I'm pretty, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, we have a developed area with a big boatyard right next door, so I mean.
It's not too, it's not going to interfere with the launching ramp that we have there, so that's.
That's fine. Reaches an adequate depth.
And the, and the neighbors hap- happy to the south, the closest neighbor besides us.
I'll add a ladder to the end of the catwalk or we could add it to the float? Get into the catwalk.
Yeah, probably a catwalk.
I'll add that and get revised plans right over to you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So you're gonna move that forward?
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Right.
Next one is thirty-five water edge. The owner's here, Marcus. Can't see his last name. This is to replace a four by thirty-five wood frame dock with four by four green heart proxy eight feet on center, a six by twenty float, a three by twenty hinge ramp and a four-foot stair, stair to the docks.
Or fish coat.
Yeah, it's on the corner of the fish coat.
Yeah, bring up the aerial on that.
This dock is already built. The dock builder came in a little while ago and he did not realize that he needed a permit. And dock builder did it in a couple of days.
This is a replacement or a new?
Replacement.
There's photos that show it before, after as well.
Okay.
So this is before.
Correct.
That's after.
So it's identical to what was there prior with the float, right?
Yeah, there's reels, there's handrails all the way down to the float. It's pretty heavy handrails, you know.
Yeah, it's like five-quarter by six on top of four-by-fours.
No one, you know, as long as everyone's fine with the handrails.
Yeah, it's kind of standard too. Covers the four-by-fours or the four-by-sixes.
Yeah, and they have a middle one that could have been a lighter.
Guys want to advance this or any questions on it?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. No, it should be good, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's got plenty of distance across to the other shore.
Yeah.
Yep.
Basically meets O R standards.
And the asbill fees will be added to the maintenance fees?
Yes.
When we issue a permit.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
That was the original permit, because I remember going down there, citing that.
That one or the one next to it with Fred, remember the one next to it? It was all kinds of issues.
That was a longer, yeah.
Yeah.
That should go towards the corner. It gets a little more contentious.
Yes. Do I need to do anything or just wait to hear from you? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You have to, there'll be another fee that you're gonna have to pay.
Okay, I figured. Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one is two lands end. Cole, you can come up if you allow. Steve, a medic. This is the, to replace three hundred, three hundred and one foot existing bulkhead to be replaced in place with a Navy style bulkhead. Twelve inch higher than existing bulkhead. Land to be graded to meet the, of the new, top of the new bulkhead. Has, you have to realize it has to be four inches from the top.
Four inches.
It's graded. And also, when you take your twelve inches, has to be taken off the bulkhead, not the, not the extension off the side, which is a little bit higher. So you have to have a survey, put a mark on it to get the right height.
Is she joining property? They really need to raise it twelve inches?
Yeah, because it gets some weather in there. Ed knows and then he goes climbing all, in there all the time.
Yeah.
And the, the grade is already higher there, so actually it would stop some of the stuff from going in there.
How do they plan on doing this project? Because there's a lot of vegetation. You know, wetlands in front of the project. Is it gonna be done from the upland area? Because, you know, you go in there with a, you know, machine and it's gonna wreak havoc with the wetland that's.
I would say from land, land side.
You have to do it from the land side, yeah. Because it'd be too much destruction to that bog and vegetation that, that's actually protecting your bulkhead.
Yeah, it's a nice area in there.
An existing two-point-five wide boardwalk will be replaced, will be replaced in place with a ten-foot wide, nine-foot, offer to be installed, landward side of the bulkhead.
Yeah, the bulk, the boardwalk will be replaced and then the, actually Conservation Board notes that most of the property will be revegetated.
Okay.
With native planting, so I have Marty's markup if you want to see it, but.
I think it would be good to have further file.
Put it in with the file, yeah.
Put it with the file.
In case there's any deviation from, you know.
And I think that the boardwalks will be replaced with flow fill.
Okay.
So when the water comes over, it goes right down. So there's a pop-up.
Right.
Uh, through flow, it just lets the water go.
Like penetrating decking.
It's what you have on your dock, I think.
It's like a grid.
It's a grid.
We have a sample down in our office if you want to look.
It, it works very well around a marine environment. It allows grass to grow up through it. And also, you know, it's not slippery. It doesn't float up during storm events, so it's, it's a good product.
Let's mean it.
You're referring to the deck end on top of the.
The boardwalk that you have around.
So, anyone have any other questions on it?
No.
Okay. Can we advance this?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Is Mr. Malcomson here for you to kind of read her out?
Yeah, he was here because he was in town and I wanted to discuss, you know, he does have, you know, an issue with that.
Okay.
We're gonna discuss Schenectock Beach Road. It's not specific to your property. It's more of a general discussion as far as bulkhead replacements, covenants on property and, you know, sand maintenances and, you know, providing, you know, public access in front of these structures from three hundred feet west, east of Crab Road, west of Crab Road, all the way to, you know, Fort Pond. Schenectock Beach Road is a fifty-foot roadway right away that the trustees own on the north side of Schenectock Bay. It allows for vehicle and foot traffic depending on the tidal cycle in many of the areas. Each one of the projects that, at the time I've been on the board, that we've done projects on property, we asked the applicant to file a covenant basically in the future if the beaches eroded in front of their property to the point where it can't be, you know, pass and repass at low tide, that they need to do a sand maintenance on the property in front of their individual properties. Now, Sean, our attorney Sean Cambridge and myself were discussing moving forward on a holistic approach on how, the best way to manage this, I believe it's about a four-mile stretch of beach for public access moving forward in the future. And you had said, mentioned something about erosion control district, allowing us to get funds to do a bigger project on the whole entire area, so.
We could make a proposal to the town board or something like that, for a special district for erosion control, if that's something you'd like to look into. It kind of creates a tax base to all take on this issue rather than have each individual owner.
Right now, it's, I believe it's about six or eight, maybe eight properties have had C N Rs placed on them specific to this. So it would be a holistic approach to maintaining the beach for public access in the future.
Hey, James? Could you pull up where it starts and where, and so people know exactly what we're talking about?
Yes.
Because when people, we talk about this, people get confused. In TV land.
Do you want me to go on a specific area?
Yeah, it's.
Crab Road's pretty much over here.
Yeah, it's about three hundred feet west of Crab Road.
Can you zoom in on Crab Road?
Where that, where there's a dug canal that is.
Filled in.
Filled in? Yeah, just west of that, there's a dug canal. And that, if you want, it's about three hundred feet right about, a little bit right there. It starts there and it heads easterly all the way to Far Pond. Which I don't know the exact distance, but.
It's a good walk, if you could walk it.
You can only walk it at low tide, Billy.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
At high tide, it's really.
Well, now, yeah, but you have that huge spit of land that you could take some of that sand out of there.
Yeah, goes to Fort Pond, yep.
Does do that here.
Yep. There are two inlets that, you know, basically break it up. One at Middle Pond, one at Far Pond. Each one of them, as we are speaking right now, pretty much you can walk at low tide because they've almost completely filled in because of COVID and the, unfortunately, the inability of the county to be able to get in there and do a timely dredging. Both of those inlets, Far Pond and Middle Pond, are on for the fall dredging as our priority list recommends. Hopefully that gets done and the material that is at Middle Pond and at Far Pond gets placed on the beach in front of some of the properties that are very much eroded. I believe there's a individual here, Mr. Malcomson, who has a property at seventy-two Far Pond, which has a rock for eventment and is, has had substantial erosion on the easterly side and the westerly side, which is Far Pond Road, which we did, we allowed him to do a rock, extension of a rock revetment and a reconstruction of a beach in front of Far Pond Road to allow public access. There are several people in the public, or more than several people in that community, that would like access similar to what they had in the seventies and eighties around or Mr. Malcomson's property. Unfortunately, with the rock revetment being placed there, over decades, it's caused erosion in front of the property, not allowing the public to access it at high tide, only at low tide. So right now, from Far Pond Road going east towards the inlet at Middle Pond, you can only utilize that public access at a lower tide, not at a higher tide. The people in the community have reached out to me asking if there's any mechanism for them to be able to cross over Mr. Malcomson's property, which there is, you know, a pass and repass on his, you know, rock for eventment for the public. The issue that has come about is the easterly side of the property at seventy-two Far Pond Road has substantially eroded and there is an eight-to-ten-foot sheer rock wall which precludes anybody to pass and repass at high tide. I met with our attorney Sean Cambridge, asked many of the board members to go down here and look at the, you know, the situation as it exists now and to hopefully that we can come up with some kind of, you know, resolution moving forward. Sean, would you like to add anything to that?
I, I think you covered most of the bases there. It's something to look at as a board again and maybe discuss a little further in executive as to what your rights and obligations are.
Yes.
However, you know, I did take the site visit with trustee Warner and I am very aware of the conditions down there as well. It's, it's definitely something for us to discuss.
I believe, Mr. Malcomson, would you like to, or add anything? You can come to the podium and just.
You own that or was that the primary?
The big circular thing?
No, down farther, where the trees are. Yeah, we own it.
Just state your name.
Yeah, I'm Steve Malcomson and I reside at seventy-two Far Pond Road. You know, I'm a little bit confused as to, I guess frankly, why this issue has arisen today. The extension of the rock revetment that was approved by the board in last November, I believe, and was installed in February or March in no way has changed any issue regarding to, regarding public access to the area east of seventy-two Far Pond Road that you're referring to. So this issue, you know, that apparently has been brought forth by some community members is an, is an issue that is unchanged by the, by the current construction and has been the case for, my understanding, at least decades.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I, I gather there are jurisdictional issues that need to be respected and, you know, we're, we're certainly subject to whatever the law is. And we're not, you know, willing just as homeowners to try to deal with this in the most constructive way possible. We have always had an open door policy, if that's the word, with the neighbors and, and have encouraged any discussion about their concerns and they've been apprised of the project from day one, as well as invited to attend any of the numerous sessions in which the project was on the, the board agenda for the one o'clock meetings. So I really don't understand, and I will say, we've owned the property for four and a half years and not once has there ever been anyone who has raised an issue or relative to that section of the beach east of Far Pond Road between Far Pond and Middle Pond. People occasionally walk around on low tide to walk their dogs. There really is not a beach there that is adequate. I don't know how recent this picture is, but there's a, there's a bit of a, I don't know if the word's a berm, but there is no beach there currently at high tide. It's kind of beach grass. There's not even, no one in the entire four and a half years I've been there has gone down there, laid, laid chaise and sit there or anything like that. Now, I don't say that in any way to suggest that the public ought not to have total access to that. I'm just a little confused as to why all of a sudden today, relative to a situation that has existed for decades and, and that no one has ever seemed to care about, has become such a hot item. So I'm not, you know, I'm sort of operating in a vacuum because I don't really know what the community is requesting or, or what the issue is because the whole thing has been blind to me as I have, you know, tried to engage community members in finding out exactly what their concerns and, and why all of a sudden this is an issue. There have been a few instances where not many, but, but a couple where, where, you know, a couple people have kind of walked over the property, you know, somewhat in defiance and in defiance of what, I'm not exactly sure because, you know, we've never blocked anything. So I guess at this point, all I would say is, you know, whatever, whatever the rights are that exist legally, you know, I don't know exactly what they are. I gather this is somewhat of an unprecedented situation that at least as far as I've been able to find out, the pass and repass rights tend to exist relative to peers where there are stairs that sometimes have to be built so someone can walk over the pier and down the other side. I'm not aware, and of course, my information is not complete, about any situations like this where, you know, to walk on top of the revetment, I mean, you're literally, you know, five or 10 feet from the house. But anyway, I, I guess, you know, that's pretty much at this point what I have to say, you know, not knowing exactly, you know, as I, as I say, you know, what's going on is kind of in the blind to me, but, you know, apparently, you know, obviously some community, community members have raised some issues. I wish I knew what they were exactly. If you want to bring them up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, yeah, basically they feel that they, because of the rock revetment being there, that they've lost public access to the beach east of Mr. Malcomson's property between that and the Middle Pond Channel. The last dredging project that the county did. Um, the last dredging project that the county did, we recommended the material, the deposition material from Far Pond and Middle Pond be placed as close as possible to Mr. Malkinson's property and then heading somewhat east. You can see, uh, Mr. Malkinson's rock preventment and then easterly, it's kind of like a crescent-shaped beach, which, which is pretty much scoured out in this. It's a pretty high erosion area. Um, normally that material being placed there would, would raise the elevation substantially, like, between three and five feet. So, that rock preventment that on the east side isn't quite such a high rock preventment to come off of. And, um, it would allow somewhat of a public access. And then the material would be basically spread to the east, um, going towards Middle Pond. But what has happened, uh, in the last, you know, specifically in the last, like, five years is the erosion at, uh, Far Pond has really, uh, existed on the easterly side in front of Far Pond Road and specifically next to your property. And on the west of Far Pond is, there's a very large sand delta or sand, uh, buildup that needs to be removed and placed in the system somehow. Uh, without the county doing the dredging with a hydraulic or an excavator, all that material, which is probably maybe three to five thousand cubic yards of material, that would be placed Far Pond Road, east of your property, uh, would build up the beach and allow for more public use. Moving easterly towards Middle Pond, that has probably, I'm gonna say, can you slide that, uh, over a little bit, James, towards? Middle Pond, yeah. That, uh, sand, uh, thumb or delta that has built up there, there's probably well over five thousand cubic yards of material, maybe closer to 10,000 cubic yards of material that came from Mr. Ma, east of Mr. Malkinson's property to, along that whole stretch. So, that whole material that's Middle Pond and Far Pond would be put on the beach in front of Mr. Malkinson's property, east of Mr. Malkinson's property, and working with the county to, uh, get an amendment to our dredging, or to their dredging permit and our dredging permit for Far Pond and put some of that deposition material in front of Far Pond Road, allowing to build up that beach and also protect, uh, Far Pond Road, the town property and Mr. Malkinson's westerly flank, which, where the project, the recent project was done. Until that is really accomplished, it's, it's very difficult for us as a board to figure out how to manage this area because you're looking at between, uh, probably eight and 10,000 cubic yards and maybe a little bit more of material that's going to be placed on the beach, which would substantially change the character of the beach. So, um, that, you know, that, that's kind of a timeline as far as the dredging goes and what we foresee building up the beach. At that point, when the dredging projects have been accomplished, I'd like to revisit the access off of your property and within our parameters, uh, you know, discuss it as a board with our attorney and meet with you and figure out what best course of action to allow the public access to this area east of your property.
Yeah, well, I don't think it would be an issue if the county had dredged. You'd have adequate amount of sand in front of, of, of his property. You know, and on, on top of that, the channel has moved closer.
Right.
There's increased erosion right at the end of the road. What has to happen is the channel has to be further, further west.
Like it was.
Like it was, you can see on the, on the tax map, the old tax map lines, it was way over there.
Yes.
Now, it's moved over, the county continues to dredge closer and closer to his property. It's just directing the water there, increasing the erosion. That all that sand in the back has to be pulled forward and placed in front of his property there and you'd have an adequate beach. I think that's what the people are complaining about is because they had access 24/7 in front of that rock preventment. They're blaming his preventment when it's really a lack of sand because it's going, you know, all the way down the other end. That, that sand is to be taken and transported back to where it came from.
James, what is that date on that picture?
Nineteen seventy-six.
See how far that, see how far that inlet is, over there.
And, and look at the substantial amount of beach. You can see Far Pond Road, how far it goes out past Mr. Malkinson's property. And Mr. Malkinson's property has probably a hundred feet of beach in front of it.
Yeah, I remember going down there all the time. It's not an issue of his preventment is causing the problem, it's the, the problem is that the dredging's not adequate and it's not, and the spoil's not placed in the right spot. And then it's just a failure of, uh, other levels of government where the county couldn't perform the hydraulic dredging and they wanted to do it with a mechanical excavator and a DEC wouldn't allow them because there was just, they wouldn't change it or mechanical excavator. They had to just change two words and the matter, and they've been telling all the population along the road, oh, that's an easy fix, but that's only one analyst and it doesn't go before all the rest of the analysts. And they're just dragging their feet and they wouldn't change the, uh, the permit. So, that could have been done this, this year.
Yeah, and the dredging went in May-June.
Because they had to move their hydraulic dredge some other place. And it's questionable about whether it's the right thing to do, use hydraulic dredging right in that area because you're gonna have like a soupy mix and it's, it could go right back in. So, if, if a, a machine went in there and actually pulled the material out, swung it over and regraded it and moved that channel further to the, you have a huge peninsula there, you could, you could move that channel over to the middle there and, and stabilize that whole shoreline.
But that's not the template, which is the dredging, uh, template for the area. That's, that's the problem. It seems they don't want to deviate from their, uh, plans that they have. But the plans, uh, specifically show the channel to be where that big pile of sand is on the westerly side of Far Pond. So, that needs to be removed.
Yes. You can easily do it with a long-range excavator, go from the, by the, by the end of the road.
Yes.
Pull the material over, fill that channel in, move forward and then dig a new channel.
So, if I could just say a, a word or two. Um, so, just to be clear, um, uh, you know, I have no interest whatsoever in, in, uh, limiting, I'd be very supportive to the built, buildup of a, of a beach in front of, in front of the preventment and, and very supportive of public access. My concern, and I'm not an expert in these matters, but I do understand that it's a multi-agency regulatory question. And, and my concern is while I, I very much, you know, the, the, the solution that you're discussing is very appealing to me, uh, my concern is that in the interim, while, while all the regulatory pieces are being put in place before the, uh, which, you know, may require the, as I understand it, the approval or cooperation of the state DEC and the county and, and, you know, and some sort of negotiation here, then in the meantime, until that beach is built up in front of the rocks, uh, you know, I, you know, which could go on, I, I'd be the first in line to say, I hope it works out this year, but it could, it just could be, I could be dead possibly before all that happens. And so, my concern is if it doesn't happen, then this interim that you're talking about, you know, isn't gonna be months, it, it might be in perpetuity. And, and so, that is my concern.
What you have to realize today is most governments are absolutely paralyzed. I mean, all this working-from-home business is just not working out. And, you know, we put, uh, case in point is Meacock's inlet, six years to renew a permit. I mean, you know, it's just ridiculous.
That was too far.
Bogged down and nobody wants to make a decision. It's just the way it is, there's no one wants to make a decision. All they do is write emails back and forth to cover themselves about why they don't want to make the decision.
Well, I, I think one of the actions that, you know, we can take is have a discussion in executive session with our attorney on what we can say the public is allowed on your property and have that discussion with you. That would be a short-term solution. The long-term solution is definitely the dredging, the bigger, the holistic approach. Like you had said back when we started this, you know, you, we're gonna save the road end, we're gonna save your property, we're gonna move the inlet over, we're gonna reestablish the beach. That's, that's a big project and I made it very clear to everybody in this, you know, in hearings that it's gonna take time. And then you throw COVID on top of it, and I hate using that statement, but it has absolutely paralyzed everybody. It's like, it's like government stock. I still have the same conversations with Suffolk County DPW. We still have the conversations with, uh, you know, Fish and Wildlife, the Army Corps, and we have the same conversations with the DEC, but everything has just slowed down. And, you know, one of our big, biggest advocates with the DEC, George Hammerth, who was there for decades, unfortunately for us and, and the public, he left. I mean, he was pretty much, he met me on site, I walked the beach with him. Him and Carol Burlock, this is going back 15 years ago. So, I had the ability to have one of the higher people in the DEC walk the beach and have an understanding of what we're discussing here and try to get in front of this erosion problem. But unfortunately, you know, it wasn't done quick enough. He retired and now we're, you know, we're dealing with other new people, new analysts who basically are, are, this is their, this is their laboratory, they're learning this every day as we're seeing this, unfortunately. You know, and it's, it's very difficult for me because I've been on the water for 50-plus years. I've seen the changes. I don't have a PhD after my name, but I know how the dynamics of Shinnecock Bay work. I know about tides, I know about currents, I know about winds and storms. And I'm trying to, and we're, our board is trying to give this information to other agencies so that we can work together for a resolution.
No, I, I appreciate that and, and, you know, I'm on the team, you know what I mean? I, I certainly don't want to be an obstacle, but I, you know, I also, you know, have, you know, can, the obvious concerns I have as, as an individual. So, uh, anyway, you know, I, I, you know,
Well, I think the.
I'm more, you know, I'd, I'd like to work, you know, with you, you know, the board and the powers that be and I don't know what to say other than, uh, I mean, I'll look forward to whatever the community has to say, assuming that, you know, there actually will be, that it will be an agenda item on the 16th, so there'll be a little more clarity. But, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm anxious and willing to try to find this, you know, to work toward the comprehensive solution. And I, I guess at this point, all we can do is continue to talk step by step and see where we go.
There was one other issue that the community had raised and I had discussed with you. On the west side of Far Pond Road, uh, there was some shrubbery that was removed, um, allegedly during your, uh, rock preventment, you know, you know, work being done. On the shoulder and them asking for some type of planting. I met down there with Sean the other day, our attorney, we walked it and it was clearly evident there was some stuff that were pulled, was pulled up. But I don't have pictures of your contractor doing it, I don't have a picture of our contractor doing it. So, I mean, it's more of a he said, she said kind of a situation where I don't have, you know, good evidence. You say it wasn't done, the community said it was done. I, I'm just trying to come to some kind of resolution as protecting that shoulder so people don't drive on it and wear it out.
Well, a lot of people park on that shoulder, there's no other place to park down.
That's right.
And they try to avoid that big, that big puddle that's in the middle of the road at the end. So, they, you know, it gets very wet down there, so, you know, you got a truck that pulls in.
Yeah.
Could damage it, how many square feet of, uh, damaged vegetation is there?
It's, it's about as big as this table.
No, that could happen to anybody.
It's about one to, one to two car lengths.
Yeah. So, I mean, and as far as the drain, that is a highway department drain. Unfortunately, that drain is full of material and it sits in the groundwater. And what has happened is the way the beach has eroded, that water comes from Far Pond, from Shinnecock Bay and comes down like a little low spot and sits on that. It was, I've actually seen fish in that little pond there. So, I mean, it, it, you know, it's, it's, it's something that, you know.
It's just the way the road's constructed, it's got, it's a low spot.
It's a swell in it, so, I mean, it's something the town highway, even if they took a machine and cut like a little swell out of there for it to drain, it would still come back in from the bay.
The only solution is raising the road, that's the only solution.
That's the hard part, so.
If I could just make a comment or two on that particular issue. Uh, the contractor worked, uh, I believe, the last week in February. I was there every day. Almost no one from the community was there. Obviously, we live at the end of the road, we see what happens all the time. A couple of things. Uh, on a fairly regular basis, a large truck will find themselves down at the end of the road either because they have, you know, might be a landscaping truck, might be a delivery truck and, and, and sometimes, I'm, you know, I'm talking about a truck that's hauling, you know, a 20 or 30-foot trailer. They find themselves down at the end of the road. You know, sometimes inadvertently, I suppose, because, you know, they haven't found a place to turn around. So, they have to do a wide-angle turn in the driveway. There was one just the other week and I, I, I wish, you know, I had my, it, it was a big landscaping, uh, truck that it was, you know, it was probably a, you know, a Ford Ram pulling a 25-foot trailer or something like that. They came in and out of the driveway, you know, had to, had to three or four, you know, moves before they could actually turn around. They are backing, they back into that area that you're discussing, uh, west of the road. It is, it has been happening certainly for the four and a half years I've been on the property and I can't imagine it hasn't been happening for a very long period before that. So, that damage, which is alleged to be, to have, uh, been created by the contractor, I can say with far more certainty than anyone who might be suggesting otherwise, because I was there, uh, that it's just not the case. But the contractor, when he had his excavator, laid out plywood on the road, he parked the excavator on the plywood and then he entered the bay where, where, where the excavator stayed in the bay for, you know, the four or five days that he was doing the work. And when he exited the bay, he went right back onto the plywood on the road. And, um, uh, so, I have actually communicated with the only two people that I'm aware of, uh, who are in this community group that are raising the issue and alleging that the damage was created uh, by the contractor, uh, one of whom I know was never there the entire period of, of the construction. And I've, and I've actually, and they've been, they've made a number of accusations which are just palpably false. And I've actually sent them, uh, an email and a, um, a text message that says, I'd be happy to read it, but I won't bore you with it, that we, that as a community member, as a, a good neighbor, as a gesture of good faith, that I'd be willing to do some plantings there, uh, even though I deny that there's any culpability on either my part or the part of any contractor that was working for me. All I wanted was an assurance, I want, I would like to know what's going on and be assured that I'm not gonna be sued for something. And I haven't even gotten the courtesy of a reply, uh, to my entreaty to them. So, I just want to make that clear. Secondly, relative to the whole parking question, uh, I, I, you know, a number of times brought up the issue and again, this is absolutely, has nothing to do with in any way, shape or form, uh, denying public access, that there really ought to be a parking sign 50, 75 feet up the road that simply says, "No parking beyond this point." That would, uh, prevent two things. That would prevent cars, you know, getting down there, you know, damaging the road end, finding themselves in a, in a situation where they've, you know, gotta turn around and frequently even cars back off the end of the road. It would also keep cars from parking to a breast at the end of the road, which they do sometimes, which makes, means we can't get in and out of the driveway. Uh, but apparently, it, it, it takes literally, I have found, to get a parking sign that just said, "No parking beyond this point," you know, 50, the last 50 feet there. Uh, it has to be approved by the town council or some such thing. You can't just, again, it's a major bureaucratic thing and something that would strike me as completely commonsensical, uh, you know, it, it, there's this bureaucratic hurdle and I think that would solve some of the problem we're discussing.
Has to be included in the town code so it can be enforced. Can't just throw signs all over the place.
Right.
It has to be an act of the, of the town council to say that a sign is there, it has to allow the police and the Bay Council or whoever to issue a ticket.
And it's usually a public hearing process too that you have to go through. I, I've done a few of these projects around, you know, the town in different places. And, uh, it, it's, it's a little, uh, work, but it can be done, but you need everybody in the community to agree to it. Like if you have, you know, two people that agree to. Like if you have, you know, two people that agree to it and the rest of them say no, then it won't get done. So that's, you know, that's unfortunate. I think maybe contacting the highway department, asking them to put a, a dead-end sign somewhat of a distance prior to the road end, it might, you know.
I think there is a dead-end sign as you turn, I believe.
I don't think so, Steve.
As you turn onto Far Pond Road?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
I'm very good.
I don't think so.
I think probably putting that at the Bayberry, uh, Bayberry Bridge.
Intersection of that road, right.
Where the bridge happens.
Something like that indication, no turn, limited turnaround.
Yeah.
To Ed, maybe they put it in that, they're talking about the end of the road.
Because Steve, as you know, they've done that.
The signs and parking.
Yeah.
Where you can slide this one in at the same time.
Maybe I'll ask them. Yeah, because it is, you know.
Have them.
Because it is town property down there that they're talking about.
Have them call the supervisor's office and say something to the jackie and let them push it that way.
I'll be happy to go to the highway department and request that. You know, I'll do my best. My success there.
Very, very limited act, limited place to park down there.
And it's a very, and it's extremely narrow road. It's not a, it's like the road is only like.
Not built for, for public access.
I mean, if you want to ask Alex, telling him to have this discussion at the meeting and ask him if he would put a, a dead-end sign on, on somewhere on that road so, you know, people are aware that when they drive down there with a large vehicle, that they need to be aware that they can't turn around.
Maybe the route to go is through CPF because it is damaging their property. Maybe they can, you know, talk to the town board also about some sort of solution to the, you know, it's only gonna get worse down there.
Well, it is gonna get worse because, uh, you know, the, the road is, you know, it hasn't eroded since Mr. Malkinson did his project and we moved the sand in front of there. It stabilized it, which is, which is really good. But, you know, moving forward without the county putting the deposition material there, that's gonna be an ongoing, it's gonna be a constant.
Have they communicated to you that they're going to be doing the project this fall?
Two, two weeks ago I had a call in and I have not had a chance to give them a call back. So sometime today or tomorrow, I will give a call to the county dredging and get an update for.
Where were they with the modifications to the permit to allow for, you know, a mechanical excavator?
They were just basically waiting to hear back from the DEC. That was the last conversation.
Yeah, that was months ago and they just, you know.
Yes.
Two words, that's all I have to add.
I think they wanted that to be in that permit and the future permit in case they get stuck again like this, so they, they can put an excavator down there.
Right, right.
I mean, they did look at the access from Atterbury Road to Far Pond on the west side to take machinery down there and their, you know, equipment, so, which, which they can acquire and it's something that's doable. So they've already looked at that, they've already looked, I believe they've done two site visits at Far Pond, looking at the situation, the shoring and also, you know, the deposition material, proposed areas, so. They, but then again, you put COVID in front of it and it's, it really gets sideways unfortunately. So, all right, so I guess we have a little bit of work to do here.
So I guess I'll probably see everybody on.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, you have to step up and add, give your name.
Thank you. I'm Faith and thank you so much for all your support. I just wanted to, what I had said to you two, like, a couple of really defiant things happened to us and, um, over July 4th, like, there was a whole gaggle of kids and a couple of young men that came across the property and they were throwing stones and they were, and I was there with my grandchildren and it was very, very upsetting. And, you know, some other like verbal sort of accosted sort of scenarios and like, I, I don't know who this group is or, but if there's a way to just kind of calm them down so that they're not gonna be hostile, especially when we have children in the house, it would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So the fish traps, next.
So there was originally 10 applications for fish traps. I think they're all fish traps and then there's one fight. So I sent them over to the Bay Council. I just emailed them to James so they should be able to put them on the screen.
Yeah, just gonna.
Thank you.
Take them out of my email.
Is this all one person?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, just.
Get it out of my email.
Oh, gotcha. So FT 363 was the application that he ended up withdrawing. The Bay Council's email in response to all these applications says, upon further review of the attached fish trap applications, it would be our recommendation that all nine fish traps be reviewed by the.
Rodney Overton.
Before issuing the permit. The one fight permit looks good, however, FT 363, which is the one that he ends up withdrawing, west of Landing Lane, has already has a fish trap in the same location. Fish trap 365 and 367 in Quantuck Bay may be tight for this area and have one on each side, east and west. FT 372, Tiana Bay off Lincoln Ave may be an issue with residents in the area. Same with FT 370 in Quogue off Stone Creek and FT 364 C. Tucko. All other paperwork and licenses attached looks good and in compliance.
By Ed Warner, East Quogue.
And then Ed came in and reviewed these further.
Hold on a second there. Which one at Tiana Bay did they think would be, which is the number that they thought would be an issue with the neighbors?
May be an issue with residents in the area.
The 372?
Same with 370, yeah, so 372. I'm a little confused. It's, okay, so FT 365 and 367 in Quantuck Bay may be tight for this area to have one on each side, east and west. FT 372, Tiana Bay off Lincoln Ave, may be an issue with residents in the area. Same with FT 370 in Quogue off Stone Creek and FT 364 C. Tucko. These are sprinkled between your area and Eric's area.
Yeah. Let's, let's tread lightly here.
I think so.
Let's tread lightly.
I have a, hey Scott, I have a question about this.
Very protective areas to have all these fish traps in, do you?
Yeah.
Especially the migrating of the horseshoe crabs up in that, up in that area.
These are, I mean, I don't know the person individually, but these sites were historically either in Kenny Maes' name, Jeff Kraus' name, Dougie James' name, Ed Warner from East Quogue, my father's cousin, and Rodney Overton. Some of them the Bennetts had also, but these, all of these areas that are proposed here, except for the one in Money Bog by Reedy Island, have all been fished, you know, in my lifetime as far as eel and perch and flounder traps. They have been there. They haven't been fished lately because many of the gentlemen that fish have passed on. So, I mean, all of these, all of these areas, except for the one by Reedy Island, have, you know, I've seen nets in there and they fish. The one by Lincoln Avenue, which would be east of Lincoln Avenue, going down towards the, uh, Mrs. Oakland's dock, I guess you're familiar with that, Eric? That has been fished by the Krauses historically. They no longer fish that area. So, I mean, all of these nets, in the time that I've been on tenure on the bay, have been fished by Baymen.
Lincoln Ave is on the screen.
When would they, they be intending on putting them in?
They would put them in, in the, usually the fall of the year.
Usually, but I'm liking, can you get closer on that? Because if the constable's raising an issue that they think it's gonna create a problem.
This is a map.
A problem.
It, it's gonna be a fish trap in the bay. It's on our underwater lands.
Right.
The people that have houses ashore, that, you know, it's like setting, you know, gill nets, it'd be like setting pots or a trap or a fight. I mean, we historically have, you know, allowed this and it's far away from the creek at Grant Boulevard where there would be a possibility that little channel there.
Right.
Just permitted dredging. This is probably almost 800 feet or maybe about 800 or 900 feet away from that.
You're not gonna be used in the springtime, only the fall?
Um, I don't know what his intentions are as far as setting traps, you know.
I think he wanted to use them this fall.
That should be, is that listed somewhere? I mean, that should be.
Usually, usually it's spring and a fall. Take them out.
Yeah, that's what the code says.
Yeah, you have to take them out before July 4th weekend.
Right, July 1st.
1st.
Whenever, whenever you get a recommendation from the constable saying that there may be whatever, it's like you just wanna.
Well, on some of them they're okay. The other ones we have to check them out. I think we have a little bit of time, you know.
You just wanna make sure that way.
Check each one.
Do you want to go through each one, one at a time on the screen or do you guys want to hold these?
No, not today. I mean, I have to take a look at each one.
Each one I went through, the first priority would be navigation and logistically close to a channel, which none of them are.
Yeah, they're all good guys.
They're, they're all, you know, close to the beach, they're all, they're all in designated fish trap areas as designated on a navigation chart and the Army Corps.
Right.
So that's, I brought that into Jessica also and I showed her how the Army Corps designates on a navigation trap, fish pound area, trap areas. So they're all within, within those parameters.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, if James could print out a aerial of each area where they're gonna be.
I think they gave.
In the application, he submitted a map with each one.
A map and an aerial, an aerial showing all the structures that are there now.
Other docks.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Full aerial of it.
Yeah, like, like similar to that and then we can just draw it on there as we can show the board exactly where they.
Show the people.
Where they lie.
The one by Comart, we had a lot of complaints about that, that first one up.
Well, Comart really shouldn't be a problem.
I, my grandfather has that permit from the Army Corps, 1923. I brought that into the office and sold Jessica that. The last time that trap was set there, I set it.
It shouldn't be a problem there, you know, it's, for some of them.
A lot of people haven't seen it then, then they call up and complain.
And then, and if you explain to them about the fishery, that it's a passive fishery and it, you know, basically you take only the stuff that is legal and everything else you throw back, you explain to the public about these nets and how the Indians used to use them way back when and they were called weers back then and they were set with trees and shrubbery. So, you know.
Well, I was just have a question on Quonic Bay and Reedy Island and Money Bog.
Yeah, with the horseshoe crabs up there.
And have the applicant put on exactly where he wants it that way because what we would do is print them out and then we would look to see where he dropped the pin and try to.
Well, I have the coordinates. I have the GPS coordinates that I could plug in. Can we just work together on this?
Yeah.
Okay. I, we could plug it in and drop it over on an aerial on Google Maps or something.
A ephemeral idea, start to take a Sharpie and just put it on a aerial so you can see.
Well, in the package that he submitted, there's all that information in there because I went from site to site to site to site.
Put a limit on each person.
We have GIS.
Can I vet it online?
GPS coordinates.
They're all, except for the one that was a duplicate by Kraus and the rest of them aren't near navigational, any navigation issues. They're close to the shore because they're traps and they start, usually start shallow water. And, you know, there's no, there's no real blaring issues of any of them.
What were they talking about at Lincoln? What was the concern?
Do they actively?
Read it again.
Someone might see it.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that. It says, uh, FT 365 and FT 367 in Quantuck Bay may be tight for this area to have on, one on each side, east and west. FT 372, Tiana Bay off Lincoln Ave, may be an issue with the residents in the area. Same with FT 370 in Quogue off Stone Creek and FT 364 C. Tucko.
It's no different than putting a mooring in a boat.
Well, Stone Creek, I mean, it's up by Effie's Hole there. I mean, that's, that's no problem up there.
That's Gene Hubbard said, Effie's Hole.
372 in Lincoln is my.
No, Eric, I went over each one of these, so, I mean, you guys go look at them.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I would just have to ask them what.
You have a conversation with them.
Okay.
Hello, Justin.
All right.
Just some aerials with, you know, the actual houses and docks in the area and stuff like that.
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin, James.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to take executive.
Okay, so if we don't have any other permits on, I'd like to close the meeting and go into executive session, discuss a bunch of different topics on litigation and where we stand with things.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
All right.